Just in case you have an Android.
Yeah, no, mine says everything I did.
Oh, thank God, there we go.
There we go.
Okay. So, good evening. Welcome to this evening's Board of Education regular business meeting today, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
So, just some housekeeping. There are exits at the rear of the auditorium, as well as exits at each side of the stage and behind the stage in case of emergency. You'll notice that there is actually a camera set up this evening. This is a precautionary backup because there were some technical issues ahead of this meeting that possibly could have precluded from the live streaming of the audio, and we just wanted to make sure we had a proper backup of tonight's meeting as well, so thank you for that. I'm just going to quickly introduce the dais. All the way on my left, I have trustee Tasneen Megji. Then I have trustee Mr. Lynn Hirsch, trustee David Keefe, board vice president Bob Fallarino, onboard president Mark Hamburg. To my right, I have our superintendent of schools, Dr. Danielle Gailey. We have our deputy superintendents of schools, Mr. Ann Kastangue. We have our assistant superintendent of curriculum and personnel, Mr. Ike Kennetser. Then we have the district's council, and then we have our district clerk at the end. If anyone is here to approach the Board of Education, we have two open times. The first open time is for agenda items only. The second, that will be before the resolutions. The second open time will be at the end of the meeting. Open time is limited to three minutes per speaker, with the first open time limited to a total of fifteen minutes. The second open time, a maximum of thirty minutes. There are slips over on the piano, and we just ask that you turn those slips into the district clerk ahead of speaking. So with that, we will get started. Do we have a student representative? Oh, there you are. So we have our student representative approaching, and we'll give her a big round of applause. And we always say introduce yourself for the new members that might be in the audience this evening.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's Sophia with the student report. So for our past events, our PSAT for sophomores and juniors was on October eighth. The senior photos took place on October tenth, and there was a successful early dismissal drill on October eleventh. Also, just wanted to wish a congratulations to Wheatley's National Merit Scholarship semifinalists Lauren Shin, Dean Yang, Viraj Paudja, Will Salaberg, and Adriana Petrizzo. Seven students this year received recognition as National Merit Commended Scholars. Congrats to Ryan Bao, Josephine Chu, Jacob Ferraro, Henry Gucker, Sarah Gupta, James Aynon, and Elizong. As for upcoming events, National Art Society induction is on October seventeenth, and our peer tutoring program is beginning next week. An email will be sent out next week for students to request a peer tutor, which is a great opportunity to learn from older students. The tutors are super approachable, and as a peer tutor myself, I can definitely say the experience is rewarding for us, too. Next day of service and learning is on October twenty-fourth, and finally, our safe Halloween was moved from the thirty-first to the thirtieth, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Thank you. So that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Excellent. I'll get started. Good evening, everybody. In October, the New York State School Boards Association recognizes this month as the School Board of Education Recognition Month, so each year, we are happy to honor and appreciate the work of our Board of Education members. This is a volunteer posting here, and with over sixty years of combined service individually, Mr. Hamburg with seventeen years of service, Mr. Fallarino with sixteen years of service, Mr. Keefe with fifteen years of service, Mr. Hirsch with thirteen, and Ms. Megji with five years of service. Again, that's a combined number of over sixty years of service, and we're very grateful for all of them. So tonight, in recognition of Board of Education Month, we are excited to introduce our life skills students who have embraced the theme of growing and blooming to celebrate the Board's ongoing support. Just as a garden flourishes with care and attention, our students thrive, thanks to the dedication of our Board of Education. To show their appreciation tonight, the students have crafted thoughtful gifts for each of you, symbolizing the growth you nurture in our schools. We are deeply grateful for your commitment to fostering an environment where all our students can grow, learn, and bloom. Please join me in welcoming these wonderful students and their teacher, Dr. Larrino, as we celebrate their creativity and your steadfast support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You missed me, Essen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
How are you? Hey, Essen.
Yes, thank you so much.
How are you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Essen. Thanks, Iceman.
Of course.
Thank you, Dr. Massa.
Thank you again.
So superintendent, just, we were really hoping you were going to do strategic plan first, but...
I have some other things.
Thank you for that.
Thank you again to our students and Dr. Larrino for all of their hard work. All right, so moving on to a less fun topic, conversations about cell phones in schools. You may or may not have heard that Governor Hochul has recently shared that she is looking into the possibility of a state ban on cellphone use during schools. She's currently on a listening tour throughout the state, and we are doing our own listening tour here in East Williston, starting these conversations. At the superintendent's advisory council meeting on October ninth, I started the conversation with a group of parents and received some excellent feedback. We will continue these conversations in the coming months, talking to additional parents, students who have volunteered to participate in my new superintendent's Student Advisory Council. We're very eager to hear the students' perspective on this matters, on this matter, and Mr. Rolson and I will be meeting with teachers at Wheatley this month to hear the teacher perspective on the matter, so we look forward to reporting back on all these conversations later on in the year. Just a brief note about safety, always our top priority in this year's budget, thankful thanks to our community and the Board for their support, includes funding for a comprehensive security audit, which is set to begin in the coming weeks. Our last audit was completed five years ago, and we are committed to ensuring that our practices and protocols remain aligned with the latest safety standards. We look forward to sharing updates with the community as we move through this process. As part of my role, I sit on the Nassau County Superintendent's Safety Committee, which gives me the opportunity to work closely with members of the Nassau County Police Department's Homeland Security Leadership Team. Last week, Ms. Kastangue and I attended a forum led by the Police Commissioner, Patrick Ryder, where we discussed critical safety measures and recent updates to school security, and our leadership team continues to debrief on the lessons that we learned from each of these groups. Last year, our district became one of only seven on Long Island to receive specialized training and behavioral threat assessment management, and we continue to focus on strengthening that team to ensure the security of our students and staff. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our student recognition for tonight. Ms. Tripp, our Director of World Languages and English as a New Language, will share some exciting student awards. Thank you, Ms. Tripp.
I have one open here, and I have one waiting. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We're very excited to be here to share some wonderful recognition that our students who are studying Italian earned. This is our second year in a row where we have had our Italian students being recognized via the AATI, so the American Association for Teachers of Italian, Long Island Division. They have a TikTok challenge, so we're talking about positive ways using social media for education. And students submit a one-minute or less video. They have it distinguished by levels, middle school, nine through ten, and eleven through twelve. They submit videos, and they have to describe their summer, and some of the criteria, I don't want to get this wrong, because it's very strict criteria, they have to, they're rated on their creativity, their originality, the music, the video elaboration, their use of Italian and cultural elements. Of course, it goes without saying that the expectation is that all of the language, the music, et cetera, is in Italian. So, I'll stop talking, we'll get to the fun parts. This year, we had two winners, one student from nine through twelve, nine, ten, who's here with us this evening, Olivia. Now, we don't have your video up first, but Olivia Del Bracco's video is up, I apologize, but Olivia Pichuka's video, and Ms. Fasselman was training me how to say that properly in Italian, so Olivia Pichuka. We have an award here for you from AATI, as well as one from East Williston School District, and they sent a trinket for you, a little something to make you think of Italy. So I'm going to just switch over to your video, since she was the nine-through-ten level winner. So it's here, okay. Are you ready? Here it goes. Is the volume up? Let's see. Oh, it's on max. There. Thanks. So Olivia won for the most elaborate video, so congratulations, Olivia. Come on up. Olivia, stay up here, we'll take a picture.
Yeah, you can open one of them. You're welcome. Congratulations. And then I don't see Olivia Del Bracco. My eyesight is terrible. Oh, there you are, so sorry. There you are. Fantastic. So Olivia won for the grades eleven and twelve, and her video was the most unpredictable, so we will enjoy that.
It's a cliffhanger.
So congratulations, Olivia, if you would like to come up for yours.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Tripp. Congratulations, Olivia's.
Congratulations to both our students, and of course, we always like to say thank you to our families and our teachers that support them. We all recognize that this is sort of a triangle, as we call it, with efforts going across all boundaries, and it's just so wonderful to be able to celebrate our students, and we're so proud of everything that they bring, not just to their home, but to their district and to their community, so congratulations, really. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
All right, just a few upcoming events to share. In response to some requests we heard last year, Mr. O'Brien and the Guidance Department have planned an SAT prep course. You should have received information about registration from Mr. O'Brien. He will continue to send out a parent square message with the registration on Sundays until the registration closes, which I believe will be at the end of the month, and we look forward to seeing how this works here with our district and continuing it if it's a success. Mr. Scotoro sent out the playoff schedule today. Fall sports are coming to an end. It's a little crazy that we're at this time in the year. The day of service and learning is coming up very quickly. The PTO has worked together with administration to create a wish list for our teachers and our students and the various charities and work that they do that day, so if you are interested in contributing, please look out for that link. It was sent in the PTO newsletter this past Sunday, and it was also in Mr. Jensen's weekly update. And tomorrow, we are excited to have and host our Special Education Parent Council Welcome Back Meeting, and that's at seven PM right here in four, well, right here at Wheatley in room four fifty. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you again to our Board of Education for all their years of service and all the hours and dedication they continue to give to our kids.
Thank you, superintendent. I believe I speak on behalf of everyone on the Board, where we really say thank you. Thank you for celebrating tonight. We appreciate it. With that, that brings us into the board report. I'm just going to kind of jump around bullets for an extra minute, if I may.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Did we forget?
I totally forgot a presentation for tonight. Do you want to do your, do that piece of your report first?
Please do the strategic plan.
Okay, all right. I apologize. Mr. Kennetser worked so hard on our strategic plan update. I didn't have it in my notes. So every year, we are, we know that last year was our first year of the district's five-year strategic plan, that we had input from our community and our teachers and our students, and we would like to report out as to how last year went and some of the things we're in the middle of and looking forward to.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Gailey, Board of Education. Appreciate the opportunity to present and share the accomplishments of year one of that strategic plan. We started this planning process in January of two thousand twenty-three. It was a collaborative effort between our administrators, our teachers, Board of Education members, community members, students, so everyone had a voice in sharing their voice in terms of what should be our priorities going forward for our short and long-term planning. We arrived on five priorities that I'll share tonight in terms of what was accomplished. As always, I invite you to check out our work at the hashtag EW learns on Instagram, Twitter, and also Facebook. And then when this is presented and published to the Board of Education presentation website, where it says click here, we'll bring you to our strategic planning page that includes the history of that entire process. So year one in real-world living, learning, and connections, one of our accomplishments, we hired a real-world learning teacher who has really assisted students throughout the process of experiential learning opportunities, internship leads, and that work is developing. This year, we had a lead course, which students both receive instruction in targeted areas as well as some internship time in the field. We are proud to have added an eighth-grade elective, stock market, and personal finance. We added a sixth-grade finance business course at the middle school, and then as you can see there, many of our students at Wheatley School are engaged in real-world learning activities, including assisting and modeling, and really supporting our students during the STEAM fair, technology coding night, and as Dr. Gailey mentioned, this continues to grow each year across the five-year strategic plan. Looking at priority two, social-emotional learning mindset and well-being, we added additional social workers to support students' needs. We have enhanced morning meetings throughout the district. Last year, one of the hallmark moves at the high school was establishing eighth-grade teams to really support students at a middle school level and a middle school mindset in the eight-through-twelve building. We finalized school start times in both building and district committees, which are in place this year and are working very well across the district. And then we invite you, November sixth is our first fall parent university, in which an email went out last week inviting parents to share a voice in some topics that we can include, and we're looking forward to that parent university. That was one of the requests from parents in the community in terms of looking at our calendar and taking some events that we had at night and really putting them together so parents have choice in fewer night events. Pathways to personalized learning, another priority of the strategic plan, continued curriculum design, increased use of Kid Oyo in the AP Computer Science pathway at the Wheatley School. We have an IRB protocol that Ms. Pace and Dr. DeSeyo helped lift last year, and that's ongoing to ensure that students are conducting research in a safe space, adhering to specific guidelines, and then under the work of Ms. Weinberg, adopted a committee of innovation to really look at flexible learning environments and sustain deepened student engagement. Post-secondary and future planning, if you had the opportunity last year, Mr. O'Brien led a college fair, eighty-eight college reps coming to our campus to provide an avenue for students to engage with college representatives, to hear about what they offer, and to make informed choices. In addition, we've had onsite college representation at the school here, where actually they issued acceptances to students. We continue to look at enhancing the guidance website and the YouTube page so students understand the different pathways that exist. We're happy to have increased participation in our BOSI's pathway programs for students who are looking at career readiness preparation. We're looking at our AP Capstone Course Guide, and this all happened in year one, so we're very happy with how these activities have answered the community and the district's requests for priorities. And then inclusivity, community, and civics, our DASIC committees continue their work. We've added media literacy lessons across the district, as we know the growing need for media literacy in this culture. We have analysis of classroom libraries to make sure that they're responsive to students' needs, and then if you look at the SEAL civic readiness numbers, twenty-seven students in class of twenty-two, we're given the SEAL, and then you'll see sixty-two recipients of the class of twenty-four. So we're really looking at the priority areas, the strategic plan, and I have to really thank the directors and the administrators in the district for really establishing goals alongside teachers each year to answer the priorities and the five-year plan. We know five years of education can feel very short, but we know it can feel very long, too, so this is a very living document that we look at every year, and we tweak our goals around what students need. What students need in two thousand twenty-four may look very different from two thousand twenty-seven, and we're very proud of the work. We have related presentations that have been presented at Board of Education work sessions, educational advisory committees and such, and those are linked on the website. So while those bullets I have listed there as evidence of year one accomplishments, you can click on these presentations for deeper analysis. And that's a small glimpse of the success of year one of the five-year plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kennetser. I think, you know, I'm so appreciative of actually that last slide, because what I was going to share with the community is really so much of this work was shown in detail throughout the previous school year, where so much of our community had a chance to engage in those discussions and participate through the work session process, but really, I think it's so important to do this yearly review, and we thank the superintendent for that to really summarize it back to the community, because, I mean, this five-year plan, I don't, has really been so successful over the multiple times we have done this, and really, it's to the thanks of the community and the support that the community puts forward, so thank you for that summary. Does anyone else on the Board have anything to share? Thank you, Mr. Kennetser.
Thank you, Mr. Kennetser, for your leadership in this work, and certainly for sharing it tonight. And that concludes the superintendent's report for real this time.
That is great. So thank you. So that brings us to the board report. We're going to start with our audits this evening, and it's expected that the Board will be adopting several different audits this evening, but before we do that, we want to share that through the board report. We want to hear comments through both, from both our auditor, as well as the board audit committee itself. So with that, I'm going to ask Alan Yu to come up. And before you speak, I'm going to just turn it over to Mr. Hirsch and just see if there's anything you want to share ahead of Mr. Yu's presentation, maybe just share with the public what they're about to see.
Sure. So just as, I guess, by way of background, the school fiscal year closes on June thirtieth. You know, each year, our books are required to be audited, so the audit is conducted for the period from May one to June thirtieth. Alan Yu comes in with his firm over the summer to conduct the audit. That's completed, recently completed in the last week or so. Alan will present tonight, expected to adopt, and then that report will be submitted to New York State following the adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, who serves as our board liaison on both our audit and FAC committee. So, Mr. Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Thank you, Mr. Hamburg. Good evening. My name is Alan Yu. I am one of the audit partners of the firm, Colin Ednawski. Our firm was appointed by the Board of Education to be the external auditor of the school district's annual financial statements, but the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as Mr. Hirsch just mentioned earlier. This is required by law. Your district, like many school districts in New York State now, have a number of auditors in place now, and our goal, our responsibility, our role, is to audit the annual financial statements, as well as the underlying records, as opposed to the internal auditors whose focus would be on the, more on the district's overall internal controls, and not only, not just on the financial reporting, but also on the operational internal controls. As Mr. Hirsch mentioned, we have completed our audit, and as required by New York State law, I met with the audit committee last week to go over the results of the audit in draft reports format, as well as answer whatever questions the audit committee members have for, regarding the audit process and the audit report. And your community is unique in the sense that your audit committee is actually made up of primarily, predominantly, community members with financial and accounting background. And as Mr. Hamburg mentioned, you do have a board liaison in Mr. Hirsch. I think Mr. O'Keefe, from time to time, you would attend as well, but last week, you had another appointment, another obligation, and therefore, you couldn't attend. So I'd just like to add that just from my own professional experience, I've been an external auditor of school districts since nineteen ninety, so it's been, you know, quite a few years now. Your community's audit committee is definitely one of the highest level, highest quality of audit committees, of audit committees that I have had the pleasure to work with. They are accounting professionals, they understand accounting standards, they understand auditing standards, and so they ask very robust and very pointed questions at times, and I welcome that. So after last week's meeting, the audit committee was satisfied with the draft audit report, and I'm here to make a summary presentation, and after which, the audit committee chairperson will hopefully recommend to the Board of Education to accept the audit reports. We are issuing what we called an unmodified opinion on the school district's financial statements. That is the equivalent of a clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that an external auditor can give an entity's financial statements, which means the financial statements and the disclosures within the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards, and that they were free from material misstatements. As required by government auditing standards, we also have to test the district's internal control over financial reporting, as well as its compliance with law.
Mr. Hirsch just mentioned earlier. This is required by law. Your district, like many school districts in New York State now, have a number of auditors in place now. And our goal, our responsibility, our role is to audit the annual financial statements as well as the underlying records, as opposed to the internal auditors whose focus would be on the, more on the district's overall internal controls and not only, not just on the financial reporting, but also on the operational internal controls. As Mr. Hirsch mentioned, we have completed our audit, and as required by New York State law, I met with the audit committee last week to go over the results of the audit in draft reports format, as well as answer whatever questions the audit committee members have for, regarding the audit process and the audit report. And your community is unique in the sense that your audit committee is actually made up of primarily, predominantly, community members with financial and accounting background. And as Mr. Camber mentioned, you do have a board liaison in Mr. Hirsch. I think Mr. O'Keefe, from time to time, you would attend as well. But last week, you had another appointment, another obligation, and therefore you couldn't attend. So I'd just like to add that just from my own professional experience, I've been an external auditor of school districts since 1990, so it's been, you know, quite a few years now. Your community's audit committee is definitely one of the highest level, highest quality of audit committees, of audit committees that I have had the pleasure to work with. They are accounting professionals, they understand accounting standards, they understand auditing standards, and so they ask very robust and very pointed questions at times, and I welcome that. So after last week's meeting, the audit committee was satisfied with the draft audit report, and I'm here to make a summary presentation, and after which the audit committee chairperson will hopefully recommend to the Board of Education to accept the audit reports. We are issuing what we call an unmodified opinion on the school district's financial statements. That is the equivalent of a clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that an external auditor can give an entity's financial statements, which means the financial statements and the disclosures within the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards and that they were free from material misstatements. As required by government auditing standards, we also have to test the district's internal control over financial reporting as well as its compliance with laws and regulations. I'm happy to report to you that we're also issuing clean opinions and we have no reportable findings. So congratulations, great job to the administration. Financially, the fiscal year, June 30th, 2024 year-end, the general fund ended with a net decrease in total fund balance, but that also included a transfer of almost $1.5 million from the Capital Reserve to the Capital Projects Fund for the necessary capital projects. And then that transfer was approved by the voters during the May 2024 annual vote. Without that transfer, if we take out that transfer, the district's general fund actually have a operating surplus of about $1 million. Your general fund has certain restricted reserves, and these are restricted by law, by education law, as well as by general municipal law, as to what the reserves can be spent on. It's retirement contribution for the employee retirement contribution system, as well as the teacher's retirement contribution system, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance reserve, as well as a repair reserve. So overall, your district's total fund balance is roughly about a little less than 12% of the annual expenditures. And, you know, my firm audits more than forty school districts, and your district is definitely one of the more responsible school districts across Long Island in terms of the number of, the amount of fund balance that it has accumulated. It has accumulated the 4% rainy day funds in the form of an assigned fund balance, which is the statutory limit. And in addition to that, you have the several reserves that you have, they are not overly funded, okay? They're definitely, your school district definitely has been very responsible in terms of the budgeting process and how much money to accumulate in its fund balance. So financially, your school district is very stable, and you have shown a very, very responsible way of budgeting over the years. And for this past fiscal year, your district has spent all but 1.5% of your budget. So you spend ninety-eight and a half percent of your general fund, what you budgeted to, to spend out of the general fund. It's a great job, okay? As far as the financial performance, total revenues compared to the previous fiscal year went up by about $2.7 million. Aside from probably tax levy increase of $1 million, the rest of it came in the form of additional state aid of about $1.7 million. And on the spending side, the total expenditures compared to the 2223 fiscal year went up by about 5.5% or $3.6 million. And the primary areas that saw the increase were wages and employee benefits, as well as contract transportation, okay? And this is what we're seeing across the board in a lot of school districts as well. It's typically benefits, health insurance expenditures, as well as retirement system contributions. So these results were within our expectation. As part of our audit, we also reviewed our audit recommendations from the previous fiscal year. Happy to report to you that your district has implemented many of our recommendations, and there are maybe one or two that are currently in progress, and we did not have any new findings or recommendations during this year's audit. So once again, wonderful job by your administration, and I want to thank your deputy superintendent, Ms. Diane Kastangue, as well as the district's assistant business manager, Alyssa, and their staff for allowing us to complete the audit in a timely fashion. And today is the due date of the audit report to be submitted to the SED, and hopefully, presuming the Board of Education will accept the audit report, then your deputy superintendent will be filing the report before midnight. Okay, and that's my report.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you very much, and the board certainly wants to echo, first of all, your comments in regards to our business department, which is led by our deputy superintendent, Ms. Kastangue, and certainly Alyssa Milano, and the entire staff, really, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. None of this work goes unnoticed and really is appreciated by the entire board, and really it's on behalf, it's because of the work that you do that this board can do what it does in regards to recommendations that it makes to the community and the community's ultimate support. So thank you. Just a couple of things that we typically do like to circle back to when you make your presentation. So you mentioned our percent spend at 98.5%, and I know that this district traditionally, over the past many years, we've typically tracked around 97% to 98%. And in your opinion, how does that compare to most districts, specifically in Nassau and certainly on Long Island?
It's, I hate to say this, but many school districts, you know, really, really, when it comes to their budgets, sometimes it's, they don't spend nearly enough of what they budgeted for. A lot of districts are in the range of anywhere from 90% to 95%. And if the state commissioners, auditors were to go in to visit those districts, they probably would get a, would get written up negatively, okay? So 98.5%, as you mentioned, over the years, your district has been very consistent in terms of your budget versus actual expenditures.
Terrific. Thank you for that. Yes, and I know that Tezneem had a question in regards to, you mentioned specifically not overly funded in regards to reserves, and I know Ms. Meg G. had a comment after the last audit meeting. You want to share that?
Sure.
No, I think, Tezneem, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to say that, I mean, I know that our district is very conservative, but is it perhaps, should we have more money? I mean, shouldn't we be, you know, the 98, 97% ranges, but isn't this a little tight?
It depends. If you ask New York State, New York State would think you can spend 99.9% of the budget. You know, from my personal and professional experience, seeing many school districts over the years, anytime a school district spends 97% or more of its budget, then, you know, they have done a very good job in terms of budgeting. Can the fund balance be higher, aside from the 4% rainy day funds or an assigned fund balance, which is restricted to 4% by law, then you have the other reserves. And credit rating agencies such as Moody's believes that local governments, including public school districts, should have as much fund balance as possible, but you have to balance the expectations of the state officials as well as the community. So I would say there, you can go up more, okay? I think any, anywhere between 15% to 20%, I think many school districts feel comfortable to be in that area because certainly then it has enough of a cushion to, in years where state aid is uncertain, or there's a state aid cut, or not enough state aid increase, then you can look to appropriate from these reserve funds to help, you know, help in a lean year. So I think anywhere, can it be higher? Sure. I think, you know, like I said, anywhere between 15% to 20% in my opinion is still reasonable.
Thank you, Alan, and I know, of course, you're going to say it can go higher, but our community has asked us to manage our budget wisely, and we'll look to our audit committee's comments in addition to that, to hear what they have to say. But it's good to hear that we are pushing the limit on our reserves, keeping those reserves low while keeping our spend at such a high spend rate, really showing again to the community what we ask for and what we budget for, we do spend, so we appreciate those comments. Does anyone else from the board have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would just like to highlight the debt balance at 630, 2024, which is down to 1.35 million. So I'm always really proud of that figure, and I think it speaks volumes to our community and to the administration that over the years, we've completed some massive projects at all three of our buildings, mostly ceiling, science labs at Wheatley, and if you go back five, six years, Fields of Wheatley, North Side Route, electrical, technology, equipment, security upgrades, spent in the millions of dollars at the same time, beginning with a debt balance that was probably, I think, 14 million, maybe a decade or so ago, and now it's down to 1.3. So I think we're in a really good spot, and the district has done a tremendous job of planning, resulting in, you know, this really, really favorable balance.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Anyone else on the board? Okay, so with that, Alan, if you wouldn't mind just stepping off to the side, I'm going to ask Mr. Patrick Lesby to come up. Patrick is our committee chair of our audit committee, and we so do appreciate the work of all our committee members, specifically tonight we're talking about audit, but truly all our members that serve on behalf of the board. The board could not do the work that it does without the recommendations and support that the committees do give accordingly. So with that, we'll ask for your comments in regards to what's being presented tonight.
So the, as noted by Mr. Yu, the audit committee met last week to go over the external audit. We also went, met in the spring, I don't know, May or June, to go over the internal reports. We went through them thoroughly, we asked a lot of questions, as Mr. Yu referred to, and the committee unanimously recommends that you accept both reports.
Thank you. I'm just going to turn to Mr. Hirsch, who's the liaison on the committee. Is there something you wanted to add or ask in addition to that?
I was thinking we're also planning to adopt the internal controls report, which focused on the grant cycle this past year, and wondering if you had any comment regarding to that?
No, just that we think it should be accepted as is.
Thank you, and thank you again for the work. So with that, I'm not seeing any other comments or questions from the board. I will thank you both, and it is expected that the board should be adopting this evening, so thank you again. Okay, so the last bullet is the update on board committees. If you're looking ahead on the agenda, you will notice that the board, as it does annually, will be adopting the committee members from each of our committees except our educational advisory committee. The board's been commenting, commented last year, commented again at the beginning of this year in regards to the work of the committees, and I believe, Ms. Meg G., you want to share some comments in regards to the EAC this evening?
Yes. The community may notice that we're not appointing members to the EAC in tonight's agenda. As we've shared previously, we've been, we've been considering how to broaden the impact of the EAC's work and engage the wider community. Last year, we incorporated much of the EAC's work into the Board of Education Work Sessions, which fostered even more transparency and enhanced community involvement and aligned with our goals of increasing participation in district work. We deeply value the contributions of the EAC members and are carefully weighing our next steps. A final decision will be made by the November business meeting. Thank you for your continued support and understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Meg G. Appreciate the comments on that, and we so appreciate all the work that all our committee members do, including that tonight's evening, the board has had a chance to go through the applications that were submitted this year through the application process to join our committees, and the board had a chance to meet with the candidates that submitted, and it is expected that those members will be adopted by resolution to join the role as well this evening. So thank you again to everyone. With that, unless the board has anything else they want to add on the board report, yes, Mr. Keef?
Hi. Since Mr. Yu mentioned that I missed the last audit committee meeting, I just wanted to make sure that folks understood I was not out doing the town. I was attending the New York State School Board's business meeting. As you know, we are part of the New York State School Boards, and once a year, the New York State School Board gets together, one representative from each of the school boards, and we adopt a platform for the school board to work on in the future, along with the legislature, along with the Educational Conference Board, along with the superintendent's group, along with the, with NICE, the teacher group, along with, of course, the state ed department and the commissioner. We started at four o'clock that afternoon. We ended, I guess, a little after 10:00 PM. We had thirty-eight action points to take. A couple of those action points, I had asked staff members here to give me some advice on how to go on it. I thank you both, ladies know who they are, thank you for your advice. We, the group passed twenty-seven of the resolutions out of the thirty-eight, which are intended to guide the New York State School Boards as they navigate this year up until October of 2025. The ones that did not get adopted also kind of guide the people, the staff up in Albany, because if we tell them no, we don't want something, we're kind of telling them which way to go when the issue comes up. So I was not out doing the town, I wish I were, but I wasn't. Thank you.
And, Mr. Keef, we so appreciate you sharing that because so much work goes into the work that we do, not just here at the table, but certainly behind the scenes at the many different functions and meetings that we do attend, and appreciate you sharing that, not only to the board, but for the community at large, so thank you for that. With that, we will move to the first open time, as there's no information items this evening. Do we have any slips? Thank you, Christina. Not seeing any slips. We'll move into the action items, and I'm going to group items 3.1 and 3.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. I'm going to group items 3.3 and 3.4 together. May I have a second? Mr. Keef, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Going to group items 3.5 and 3.6 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 3.7 by itself. May I say, may I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Again, just a big thank you to all of our volunteer community members that share on behalf of the board. It's so appreciative. So thank you for those that came back and those that are joining this year. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 3.8 to 3.11 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 3.12 to 3.20 together. 3.12 to 3.20. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. 3.21 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 3.22 by itself. May I have a second? Ms. Meg G., is that your hand? Yes? Second by Ms. Meg G. Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. I am pulling item number 4.1. I'm pulling item number 4.1 from the agenda. Thank you. I have, I'm going to group items 5.1 to 5.5, with 5.5 being a walk-on. 5.5, resignation, special education teacher, C. Gurnon. Recommendation to accept the resignation of Caitlin Gurnon, special ed teacher for Willett's Road School, effective October 15, 2024. I, may I have a second on items 5.1 to 5.5? Mr. Keef, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 6.1 to 6.2. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing- Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I have, I am going to amend item number 7.1 before I group items 7.1 to 7.6. 7.1, the change, it now currently reads through June 27, 2026. It should read through June 27, 2025. With that, I am going to group items 7.1 to 7.6 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. 8.1 by itself. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. 9.1 to 9.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Okay, I am going to group, I'm going to do a couple of walk-ons, and I'm going to group items 10.1 through 10.15. Give me a second. All right, so first, let me walk on item 10.14. Appointment probationary teaching assistant, G. Zorzy. Recommendation to appoint Gina Zorzy as probationary teaching assistant, step four for, step four for Wilt's Road School, effective October 23, 2024. And 10.15, appointment extracurricular activities at Wilt's Road School. Recommendation to appoint Thomas Lenny as social studies research club advisor for the period of September 23, 24 through December 13, 24. I also want to amend item number 10.12. Adding the bullet pending civil service approval. Adding the bullet pending civil service approval. So with that, I'm going to take items 10.1 through 10.15, including the amended resolution. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to the second open time. Any slips? Okay. Seeing no slips, I am going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? There's a hand? That's why, what happened to the slip? Come on. Just take, I think it just pulls out, Eswa.
The mic pulls out.
The microphone just pulls out. There you go.
Members of the board, good evening to all of you. Administrators, attorneys, Adam Clark. Today's meeting was quite, quite a pleasant meeting, actually. What to see in level of engagement within the administrators and the board members, of course, it was quite a pleasant meeting. In contrast with some of the more recent meetings that I've attended, I just wanted to share an opinion, just a comment that yes, it was a pleasure to hear all of you speak, most of you speak. In the last board meeting, was it September, I believe? The school district celebrated and honored students for their outstanding performance for National History Day in terms of their presentation. There were three presentations. I don't remember the first one, but the second one was about an Indian, it was a bit surprising to me, Raja Ramon Roy, who took it upon himself as a personal crusade to protest against certain practices, not because of, but because it affected him personally. Number one, his own sister-in-law indulged in it, committed something which he wanted to protest against. The third presentation was about students protesting against injustice in Birmingham, Alabama, I believe. And I don't remember the place. I don't remember the history. But in both of these incidents, which the board celebrated and honored for its students and also for the values that the board represent, it was about either students or adults raising and protesting against what they, what was, let's say, unjust despite being legal. So I'm sure the students in Birmingham, Alabama, at that time, they were protesting against what was legal and which, for which the heavy hand of all legal, legalese, if you will, came in play. And I saw a bit of that in the previous board meeting. The heavy hand of this board coming down to enforce in a situation which is not too dissimilar or not, which had fairly similar parallels, let's say, what the students were protesting in Birmingham and what Raja Ramon Roy, which I'm sure probably very few people are familiar with. But I did saw the heavy hand of the legal scholars out here come down upon members of this community sharing legitimate grievances, very legitimate grievances. So I'm a bit surprised that the board has chosen to act in a way which, to those sitting in the audience, comes across as being extremely heavy-handed. So I just wanted to share this irony in the sense that we're celebrating students and adults protesting against what is legal, but which is unjust. And when, something like that. So I, this is a comment, there are no questions here. There is a policy in the school district, policy 1440. Does the board, does anyone on the board recall the last time that the policy was actually given a reading to the public?
I'm sorry, Eswa, say that again?
This was policy 1440.
Yeah.
Within the seven years that I've been here...
Complaints concerning school personnel.
Yes. Has it been given a public reading anytime recently?
I don't have the date on my slip.
It was adopted June 20th, 1988.
Thank you. June 88.
Yes, the adoption was in June 1988. I'm sure many of you, some of the board members here perhaps would say, joined this community after that date. Don't you think that would be of something, we have had plenty of readings in this board?
So, Eswa, I think your comments are blended to a couple of different perspectives. So first, I'm just going to ask counsel to comment in regards to the 1440 itself and what the purpose of that policy is.
Sure. So the regulation to policy 1440, which is complaints concerning school personnel, provides that complaints are to be resolved as quickly and as effectively as possible, as close to the area of disagreement as possible. And so those regulations set up a procedure for the efficient resolution of any complaints from the public.
So the reason I asked the attorney to say that first is because there's many purposes for a board of education, primarily to discuss the business of the district. But one thing is not for the purpose of a board of education is to express personal grievances, directly mentioning staff, people's children, other children. This is not the appropriate venue. There are appropriate venues to do that. And if you've heard any words on behalf of the boards back to community members, it's really to protect the rights of those individuals. It's not to limit a voice, but to protect the larger voice, and that's those individuals themselves. And we have policies that are there and established to do that, just for that. That's the proper venue. We also have taken an approach that we're really trying to respect our practice, our policy, by improving our practice in regards to truly limiting people's comments to the board. And as you heard, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the three-minute rule, 15 minutes in the beginning, 30 minutes at the end, because this isn't an open discussion back and forth between board and community, but really it's an opportunity to share something that so that the board can then turn it over to the appropriate venues where it should be looked into further. And we're really trying to enhance and respect all of people's times and also respecting the people that came forward and asked the board to say, please, you know, be mindful of this. We also might want to speak. Time is being used up in other ways. So all of this, there's not a change, but it's really just going back to what was originally established, which is the practice. So we thank you for your comments. You know, it's not intentional and certainly not directed at anyone in particular, but we're really just trying to be consistent in how we go about the business of the Board of Education. So is there any other comments from anyone?
There's one last one. Just follow up.
I do think District Clerk has said you've used up your three minutes. But what we always say at the end of the meeting is if you have any certainly additional areas of concern or questions, you can always submit those via email for further review. So with that, I don't see any other hands. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? 5-0. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.